Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our monthly meeting of our planning board. We have Chris Fournier on the line. Thank you, Chris, for calling in.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so we'll just call the meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts?
Yeah, me.
Okay, and I believe we just need to state what that conflict.
Yeah, it's about the short-term rentals.
Gotcha.
And I'm in conflict because of that, so I'll just excuse myself.
Okay. Now, before we approve the agenda, we've made a few changes. We're going to move item four to item one, and we are going to move item two. We'll leave that as number two. And Belmont Street will be number three, and our variance for 15 hemlock will be number four. So I just need an approval of the agenda. Moved by Counselor Back, seconded by Counselor McKay. All those in favor? Great. All right. Thank you, Chris. And so I need an adoption of the minutes from our last planning board meeting, which was January the third. Okay. Moved by Shallen, seconded by Bobby. All those in favor? Okay. And was there any business arising from those minutes? Okay. Seeing none, we can move right on to reports. And we'll start with you, Robert, and that will be on the licensing bylaw registration for short-term rentals. Over to you.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm here tonight to present the short-term rental licensing bylaw. As some of the board members are aware, the staff brought forward a list of official plan and zoning bylaw amendments that would regulate and dictate how an STR, a short-term rental, can operate within the city of Charlottetown. That was done last year, in 2022, and essentially, the bylaw amendments and the official plan amendments were passed. And they're coming into force in effect March 28th of this year. So in the next couple of weeks, the proposed regulations that were adopted by council, and I believe recommended by this board to council last year, will take effect March at the end of the month. So just a high level, it basically opened up every, any dwelling unit, except for apartment units, to be used for a short-term rental, has to be the host or operator's primary or principal residence, which means they have to live there year-round. The intent of that is to, again, stop commercialization of STR activity, since it has impacts on both the availability and affordability of long-term housing. So those regulations are going to come into effect at the end of the month. Part of the framework for STRs was that a licensing regime be implemented, and that would just effectively allow staff to, you know, allow and license and administer short-term rental licenses for any STR operation in the city. So just to bring everyone up to speed, the amendments themselves are done. Those are completed, and they are coming in at the end of the month. We did allow for a one-year grace period, so it's been the 2022 season, in which the department hasn't done any act of enforcement, or applying the actual regulations that are being adopted at the end, or being enforced in effect the end of this month. It basically allowed STR operators, or those people that had short-term rentals, and maybe even multiple properties, to be aware that, you know, these regulations are coming, so if they don't fit within that criteria, they would have to unload those operations, or send a short-term rental property back into the long-term rental market, so if it's not their primary residence. So we're now past that year. That grace period has been done and completed. We're now on the third step by implementing a licensing framework. That licensing framework is attached to the report, attachment A, and that's kind of the proposal for tonight. And then we have two more items that will have to be adopted and passed. One is the licensing fees themselves that will be attached to the fee bylaw. So we have a bylaw that dictates permit fees, application fees, and so short-term rental licensing fees will be included into that bylaw. So that will be coming shortly. And then final, but not least, is the enforcement aspect, and that's to create an enforcement bylaw that would allow staff, or municipal staff, to enforce regulations, not just for short-term rentals, but really any regulations relating to any requirements of the bylaw. And that is currently being worked on by our solicitor. So the STR licensing framework is as follows. We can see there's a general administration, so basically how staff, what is a complete application, what are the documents we're looking at for a host or operator to submit at the time of application, how we verify that information. We also have the renewal requirements for anyone that's renewing a license. So as per the licensing bylaw, we'll require any STR operator to first obtain a license, and then there will be an annual renewal for thereafter, if they want to continue using their principal residence as an STR. We also included into this bylaw framework a registry in which we will record every licensed STR within the city. That will be publicly available for anyone that would care to see, and ensure that if they're actually renting the place of residence as an STR, if it's been licensed. It also follows concurrently with the provincial licensing framework as well. And so basically, your renewals will occur March of the following year, so that will give people one year of operations, and they'll have to reapply in March if they want to continue or renew their application. That kind of falls in line with the provincial tourism. They also have their expiry at the end of March, and so we're trying to do that in tandem with their framework. And I'm happy to say that now they will use the municipal license as confirmation before they issue their provincial tourism license. So now we can ensure that compliance is being followed at both the municipal and the provincial level. We also have an inspection process that's outlined in there, a refusal of a license, so anything that could deem a refusal of an STR license, that staff has the ability to do so. And then an appeal process included in that, if the operator host wishes to appeal that decision. We have insurance requirements. I believe everyone's kind of aware of this, that if you start operating a private residential dwelling as a STR, that's seen as going beyond a residential use, and so insurance companies actually have special requirements, because it's like a commercial use. So we also have those requirements in there. And finally, an enforcement procedure when we deal with noncompliance. So as I kind of stated before, this is really just an administration bylaw, less of a land use bylaw. The land use component came into, before this board and council last year, so that kind of deals with what an STR is, how it can be used, how it can be operated. This is just more of an administration, and we were just advised that, you know, this still has to go through a committee of council, so we chose to just bring this through to the board, with your recommendation going to council. So the licensing bylaw itself has been reviewed, not only by staff, but by our solicitors. And once this is hopefully adopted, the next bylaw that will hopefully shortly be coming through will be an enforcement bylaw, and that's currently being worked on our solicitor as well. So once that is completed, you'll probably see an enforcement bylaw coming forward as well, and that would just deal with the enforcement of any bylaw regulation, not specifically just STRs. So if anyone has any questions on the actual administration bylaw, I'm happy to answer that. Like I said, it's basically an administrative tool to allow us to effectively administer STR operations in the city, and gives us additional abilities to either reject an application or renew an application. We have appeal process, everything that's in there. From a very high level, an applicant comes in, submits their application for an STR license. Documents that we're primarily looking for is proof of principal residence, and we verify that through assessment information. We also require a floor plan that shows emergency exits, which will have to be posted on the operation itself, and that's just like on a fire safety plan itself. Also, fire extinguishers on every level that the STR operation is taking place within the dwelling, and then any other documentation like parking plan or anything like that, that staff would deem required in order to approve or reject an application. And once an application, if it is approved, the operator will receive a licensed sticker, and then that sticker would have to be just in a visible place outside of the dwelling unit. I think a lot of board members have probably seen this in other municipalities, where basically you'll have your license number on the sticker, kind of outlining that this is a licensed, you know, STR operation in the city. And yeah, and once that, like I said, renewal every year thereafter, if they wish to continue the STR operations within that dwelling unit, we'll always have a registry available, because that was one of the key things that a lot of municipal jurisdictions and expertise have stated, that as long as you start getting these, you know, dwelling units registered, you know, that's the first step in building up kind of your database and knowing where they're located. Now, you are aware that we do have third-party scanning software, a tool that allows us to actually see what's effectively being advertised as an STR, so we use that data in conjunction. So hopefully, we and our solicitors have covered all the main points. If anyone has any specific questions, like I said, I'm more than happy to answer them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Just before I open it to questions, when you first started, I know you talked about the enforcement bylaw that will come later. Is that what we're referring to as the summary proceeding?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
But then you talked about something else after the licensing bylaw, about pricing? Was there something else? You talked about the cost of getting the license.
Oh, yes. So to you, Madam Chair. Basically, our department maintains a fee bylaw, and anytime we change fees or make amendments to fees, and that can be building permit fees, subdivision rezonings, variance, and now STR licensing will be included into that bylaw. So it'll basically establish the fees of a short-term rental license if you want to operate within the city of Charlottetown. So that will be coming.
Okay. Soon?
I believe so, but the manager is here to provide more information on that.
It will be a part of our budget to make a recommendation on the fees bylaw, so indicating the, it's an annual fee, so we'll be bringing that forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Robert. I'll just open it up now for questions. Go ahead, Counselor McKay.
More comment. Robert, under 5.1, the application process, just reading quickly again, applicants proposing to operate a short-term rental shall, when applying for a license must submit. I think you just want to clear up that wording a little bit before you bring that to council. I don't think you shall and must, either you shall or you must, right? When I read that, it's not clear, but that would be something I'd look at.
Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a question. It seems to me that one of the keys to this exercise is going to be enforcement. Does the city have adequate resources to handle that side of things at the moment, or will there be a need for additional resources?
Thanks for that question, Paul. I think I'm going to refer that to Mr. Forbes. We actually just had some discussions around that in committee meetings. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, that's a part of our budget. We need an additional person to help us to regulate STR, the STR bylaw, but as well as other bylaw infractions as they pertain to the Planning and Development Department, like the zoning bylaw is pretty comprehensive, and it's, so we, hopefully, as a part of this budget, which is being crafted as we speak, that position, I can't telegraph to council what to do, but it's certainly an ask that that position be considered to get this implemented. And the, on the issue of compliance, the, our real influence is in the ability to either advise the province that somebody complies or doesn't comply, because if they don't, then the province doesn't give them the license as well. So the two of us are working in tandem. You know, it's going to be the first year. We anticipate that it won't be as smooth as the second year, but we're trying our best to make sure that those STR operators can obtain the required licenses that they need from us as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Any, oh, go ahead. Thank you very much, and thanks very much, Robert. Just wondering if you could speak a little bit about the inspection language, like, what's the intent around inspection? When might it happen? What would the criteria be? That type of thing?
Sure. Through Madam Chair, to the planning board member. So we do have an inspection regime. Again, it's kind of outlined, if you look at Section 12 of the licensing bylaw, violation and enforcement. So essentially, it kind of outlines when someone could be in a potential violation of either their license or not obtaining a license. Generally speaking, through our conversations with the building, with the chief building inspector, is that if the applicant is basically renting or short-term renting their home, you know, often than not, it's already been approved for occupancy, per se. There are situations where there might not be an occupancy. This would effectively allow staff to choose, and it could be at random at first, just because of the amount of manpower it would take just to get through all of the licenses and to inspect every premise, wouldn't be feasible. But certainly, there is a plan in place that we would probably take random inspections on random properties. Certainly, there would be certain properties or certain type of properties that would warrant an inspection over others. So for example, some of the older buildings within the 500-lot area, those would probably have more of a priority to be inspected, just for like basic life safety issues, like through the fire and building codes. So those are more requirements or primary, like residents that we would prioritize over, say, like a singly detached dwelling, like maybe in West or East Royalty, or something like that. So essentially, I think it would have two things. It would be first, what is the extent of the STR operation? Is the entire dwelling unit being rented out, or is it only a portion? And then from there, where is that STR operation located? And if there's like, say, in a file that's on one of the properties that there could be safety issues, this gives us additional ability, right, to go in and to do inspections and to maybe require upgrades if that's necessary. So certainly, I think there will be like random audits and inspections that will happen and will occur, but not necessarily on every residence or every STR operation. The other thing that staff also does is one of, some of the required documentation or to obtain a license, say like a floor plan, confirmation that they have like smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, there's a safety plan in place for people using the STR operation, like in case of an event of a fire, they're aware of all the exits and how they can get out. So those are all things that staff would ensure, ensure that's there through checking this application. But then there is certainly, like any other permit, conditions that the owner or the operator hosts has to, you know, take on, like that responsibility of ensuring that, yes, you do have smoking, working smoke detectors, you do have the fire plan that's now approved by our office, it's going to be now in place at the residence itself. So those are, those conditions and confirmation that that's been done is also part of this as well, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. So the planning department is recommending, that planning board recommend to council that the proposed short-term rental licensing bylaw would be approved. So at this stage, if we have somebody that would like to move that, we can proceed. Okay. Moved by Paul Conley. Seconded by, okay. All those in favor of moving this proposed licensing bylaw to council for approval? Anybody opposed?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Chris. Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you. So now we'll move on to item number two, which is 22 Fourth Street and 102 Watts Avenue. A request to consolidate two lots at 102 Watts Avenue and a portion of 22 Fourth Street to allow for the development of a new standalone storage office building on the rear portion of the new lot. Okay.
There we go. I'm on. I am familiar to some of you, but not to all, so just to introduce myself for folks I haven't met yet, Mr. Beck being one of them. My name's Emily Treener, and I'm a planner. I'm here today as a consulting planner, working for Dillon Consulting, but I was previously a planner in the city of Charlottetown, Planning and Heritage Department, so I'm lucky to be back, just in a little, with a slightly different hat, but doing a similar job here today. So the first item we have for you this evening is this law consolidation. So it relates to 102 Watts Avenue and a portion of 22 Fourth Street. So this is in the West Royalty Business Park, and the intent of the property owner is to sell the remnant parcel, so I don't know if you guys can see this very well. Let me get my, there we go. So this is the remnant parcel, so it's that portion right there, and the consolidated lot is this portion right there. So the intent of the property owner is to sell this portion and to have this consolidated parcel, to have the rear portion be developed with a, what I understand is a concept right now for an office warehouse type use at the rear. So this is just to give you a feel for the existing condition of these properties today. So 22 Fourth Street is the location of a former automobile sales service shop. It has surface parking and loading at the front and rear of the existing building, and it has some green space to the rear, which is that kind of parcel that will be consolidated with the 102 Watts Avenue property. So an image of that's on the bottom there. And that's currently the location of Lind Industrial Gas Welding Supply Store. It has some outdoor storage on this lot, it's surface parking, as well as plenty of green space, which will form part of the consolidation. And a feel for the surrounding area, so again, it's in the West Royalty Business Park. The surrounding properties are similar to the subject property's zoned heavy industrial, and they're largely occupied by low and medium density non-residential use, so there's a mix there. This table here just provides a summary of my analysis of the application, looking at the official plan policies, the regulations of the zoning and development bylaw, and just the surrounding area context. There are certainly lots of positives here, so the law consolidation, if approved, is intended to accommodate this infill development and compact urban form at the rear of the consolidated parcel. So this would be maximizing the use of existing underground services in the area, and also support one of the directives in the official plan to support the growth of local industry in Charlottetown. The remnant parcel, which we're referring to, the parcel reduced in size when we say remnant, it will maintain driveway access off Fourth Street and surface parking at the front and rear of the existing building, so the negative impacts of this consolidation is expected to be minimal. The consolidated lot should have minimal, or the consolidation will have minimal impacts on adjacent properties as well, which also maintain the same zoning and use, and it just harmonizes with the surrounding industrial, commercial character. I also have some points regarding neutral and shortcoming aspects of the application. We can circle back to that if you folks wish, but in the meantime, I'm just going to roll on to the recommendations. So I'm recommending that planning board encourages council to approve the request to con- the request to consolidate, subject to a couple of conditions. So, one being that the applicant provide or register the final survey plan showing the finalized boundary lines with the Provincial Register of Deeds. And also, that the applicant provides the Planning and Department, Heritage Department, with confirmation that Innovation PEI has reviewed and accepted the law consolidation. Just in my desktop review, I saw that the Innovation PEI has standards and regulations in place for lots within the West Royalty Business Park. I'm not sure if they're still in place or not. That's why I'm just asking that the applicant circulate to them and circle back to us to let us know all good for Innovation PEI. So, that concludes my remarks on this application. I welcome any questions from you folks. And the representative of the property owner is with us here today if you wish to touch base with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And as she mentioned, the applicant is here. And I can open that up to Planning Board if anyone has any questions for either Emily, myself, or Alex, or the applicant. All right, well, if, if there's no questions, then, then I'll ask for somebody to move that we recommend to council to approve the request to consolidate. Moved by Bobby Kenny.
With the two subjects.
Yep, with the two.
Absolutely, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilor McCabe. All those in favor? Chris?
I'll be in favor, Madam Chair.
Anyone, and opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to 34 Belmont Street. And we do have the applicant online as well. And this is over to you again, Emily.
Wonderful, okay. Just ask Rob to kindly pull up my slide. Wonderful. So, this is another law consolidation request, folks. So, this relates to 34, excuse me, 34 Belmont Street and a portion of One Plywood Place, which is closer to our downtown Charlestown area. So, similar to the previous request, these folks are looking to consolidate a portion of another parcel, and I'm going to show you here. So, this parcel, which currently belongs to One Plywood Place, the folks at 34 Belmont Street are looking to consolidate that with their current lot right here. And that would leave this remnant parcel here, which is One Plywood Place. So, the intent of the owner of 34 Belmont Street is to locate in addition to the existing 34 Belmont Street building on this consolidated parcel. And they are looking to retain the existing parking that's located at 34 Belmont Street today, which is by their locating the addition there. The intent is also to use this addition space to accommodate Hall and College educational programming. I skipped ahead, just bear with me one moment. Okay, so, this is, again, just a feel for these two properties. So, One Plywood Place, it's located at that Stub Road, at the terminus of it. The existing building that's there today was actually constructed, according to the Planning Department records, back in 1946. And it's undergone several additions since then, but all pre-zoning and development bylaw. 34 Belmont Street is occupied by that two-story building there and a large surface parking lot. The lower level of the existing building today contains the upper room hospitality group. And the second floor contains Hall and College educational programming. That building, according to Planning Department records, was constructed at first in 2005, and it's undergone several additions since then as well. Again, just a feel for the surrounding area. So, this property is located close to the Mount Edward Road, St. Peters Road, Longworth Avenue intersection there. It's about 200 meters east of that. And it is also about 200 meters north of the 500 lot area. So, there's our two zone properties just north of the subject property here. And then here as well, there's our three zone properties there. And also, to the south. And then it's properties with mixed-use corridor zoning, similar to the subject properties to the south and to the west as well. So, again, a table summarizing my analysis of the application. And I'll just focus in on positives at the moment. And again, any questions about the neutral or shortcoming items, I'm happy to speak to those after. So, this law consolidation will allow for the expansion of the existing building at 34 Belmont Street. Again, this would be considered infill development, compact urban form that maximizes the use of existing underground services. Also, in keeping with the official plan directives, the law consolidation will support the physical space needs of a major educational institution in Charlestown, being Hall and College. That remnant parcel will maintain driveway access as well as surface parking and loading areas. So, those are all positives. And the consolidation should result in minimal land use conflicts with adjacent non-residential properties. And just regarding the residential properties to the north, if that expansion were to proceed in the future, there would be requirements that apply in the zoning and development bylaw in terms of providing a buffer from those residential uses to the north to ensure minimal impact on those uses as well. So, that concludes my remarks. And just my recommendation is that the Planning Board encourages council to approve the request and, subject to the condition that the final PIN survey be submitted to the province. And then, according to the comments from the building inspector who did look at this, that existing building on Plywood Place that was constructed back in '46, they'll need to undergo some renovations to that building just to ensure it meets building code requirements with respect to separation distance from that future expansion there of 34 Belmont Street, like unobstructed openings and fire code ratings on the facing building wall, that kind of thing. So, that's why I'm recommending that the existing building on that lot be designed and renovated to the satisfaction of the chief building official as a condition of approval. All right, thank you, folks. Those, that concludes my presentation on this one.
Thank you, Emily. And again, we do have the applicant on the phone. So, I can open that up to questions for either Emily, for the applicant, or for Alex, or myself. We're quiet. Oh, go ahead, Councilor.
Do we have to send letters out on these things? Or is this just as a write? I can't remember, I'm trying to recall.
So, for law consolidations that, in zones beyond R1 and R2, no, you don't have to circulate. It's just a matter of going through Planning Board and council. Whereas, if it's in R1, it's, I believe, for R1 and R2, you do have to do, no. Sorry. R1 and R2, that has delegated authority to staff to approve. So, there's no notification requirement for that. I can dig out my zoning bylaw if you want me to confirm that, but...
Because we've had meetings where we've had to go to public on consolidation lots before, haven't we, Alex? I know the apartment building, um...
I can pull up my zoning bylaw just to confirm, just give me two minutes.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of make sure that, that I understood.
Now, the issue of, for lot consolidation, that's usually the, why it's here is that when you add lots together, you obtain more development rights. And council usually wants to know what, what are those development rights before the building permit is issued. So, it's just, it's a way to ensure that something on toward isn't being built in somebody's neighborhood that was, you know, either overwhelming or out of context. So, council takes a look at it. But Emily can read you the section.
Just pulling it up one moment here.
When we did the Treener Street discussion a few years back, that was a consolidation, law consolidation. That's what I was trying to, like, when we got into that kind of situation. So, we don't have, we're not required, or it's not best practice.
It, it just depends on the zone that it's in. So, again, I'll defer to Emily in regard to, that would have been a residential property. And the criteria is, I think that one may have been triggered by, there was a lot consolidation on that. I, they're all the blur, but I'll defer to Emily.
There's a few provisions in that section, depending on the zone where the lots are located. So, what I mentioned earlier, staff have delegated authority to approve without notice or going through council for R1 and R2 zone lots. In the case of lots in the R3 and R4 zones, that's when a notification to property owners within 100 meters is required and, you know, opportunity for a comment, whatever, prior to Planning Board and council. So, it's R3 and R4 zone properties where that applies.
Would, what zone is this that we're in?
This one is, is, it's heavy industrial, so that's, no, sorry. I'm thinking of the old one. This one's MUC, mixed-use corridor.
So, we don't have to send out letters in mixed-use corridor?
No, it's only for R3 and R4, yeah. I'm jumbling all my applications, sorry.
Now, there's a lot of rules. I just want to make sure that we're following them.
And that's in Section 48 of the zoning bylaw, if you ever want to take a look.
Which section?
So, it's, the exact regulation is in 48.3.4, where it talks about notice requirements and when it applies, when it doesn't.
Does anybody else have any questions on this application? Okay, well, then, if we can get somebody to move that we, we recommend to council to approve the request to consolidate both of these lots, which would result in two separate lots, subject to the following conditions: registration of a pinned final survey and the existing building on the proposed lot designated and renovated to the satisfaction of the chief building official. I just need somebody to move that. Moved by Challen and seconded, Councilor Beck. All those in favor? Chris, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we can move on to our final item on the agenda, and that is 15 Hemlock Court. And Emily, that's you again.
All right, last one from me, folks. So, 15 Hemlock Court, this is a major variance request. And it's to permit an expansion of about 82 square meters to the footprint of the existing dwelling on this lot, which currently contains a group home use, which I'll speak to momentarily. So, the proposed expansion is meant to accommodate a new barrier-free access, which you see on the slide here at the rear of the dwelling, as well as additional staff and storage space. And that would be contained in the footprint here, which this part represents the addition of, to the existing dwelling. And it's intended to serve six individuals with intellectual disabilities who reside within the existing group home. So, under the current zoning and development bylaw regulations, this group home use is not permitted as a rate on properties zoned R1L. However, we receive confirmation from Queens County Residential Services, who owns and operates this facility on the property, that the group home has operated here since the early 1980s, prior to the effective date of the current zoning and development bylaw. So, for this reason, under the provisions of the zoning bylaw, it's considered illegal, non-conforming use. And there's a section under major variances in the zoning bylaw that states when there's a proposed intensification, or in this case, an expansion of illegally non-conforming use, the major variance process applies. And this is an image on the right. I'm sorry, it's a little dark, or I was there, I think, at 4:30 in the evening. But that's the current condition of the 15 Hemlock Court property today. So, you can see it has the appearance of a single detached dwelling, the existing building there. So, to give you a bit of a better feel for the area, so, 15 Hemlock Court is located at the terminus of the cul-de-sac on Hemlock Court. Just to the west of the property and northwest, southwest, it's all institutional uses. So, to the north, there's a commercial childcare center. To the northwest, west, and southwest, there is nursing home uses, which kind of have a medium-density character. So, there's Corgan Home and Westperwood Villa as well. And then, to the northeast, east, and southeast, you have single detached dwellings. And the existing zoning reflects these uses as well. And just to note, we did receive one letter of objection through the public notification process from an adjacent owner of one of the single detached dwellings. For the most part, they were just looking for clarification, though, on things like the number of residents and staff that will be with, within the expanded group home, setback distances from their lot, and if there's any proposed tree removal or just concerns about flood impacts as well, is what they brought forward. So, I speak to that in the report, and I can speak to that today if you folks wish. So, just to touch on the positives here with this application. So, the proposed addition, it does represent low-intensity infill development, again, maximizing the use of existing services. So, this is a positive. The proposal does meet and exceed regulations for single detached dwellings in the R1L zone, but it also meets and exceeds regulations for group home dwellings in zones where this is permitted. And I would note that they're generally more permissive, the regulations that apply to group homes relative to the single detached dwelling regulations. The scale, height, massing, and setbacks does harmonize with the existing character of the surrounding area. And it does provide a nice transition between the single detached dwellings and the kind of medium-density institutional uses to the west. And, you know, Queens County Residential Services has indicated that this will better meet the needs of existing residents and staff of the group home. And this does conform with an official plan directive to provide housing that meets the needs of individuals with intellectual disabilities. And the expansion, according to the applicant, will not result in any increase to the number of residents or staff within the group home as well. So, for these reasons, I'm recommending that Planning Board encourage council to approve this application, subject to a couple of conditions. One being the, the surface parking. So, Sable Arc, who prepared the drawings, are showing that it, four parking spaces can be provided. It just doesn't provide dimensions for the parking space. So, this is just an extra detail that can be provided through the building and development permit approval process. And I'm just recommending that, you know, it be designed so it conforms with the zoning bylaw, and then there's no resulting increase to the driveway access width, which is always an important public works consideration. And then, I'm recommending that it be, the expansion be completed in accordance with National Building Code requirements that will be identified in the building and development permit process. So, we also have the applicant representative here. If you folks have any questions for myself or the applicant, I welcome those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I'll just open it up to you folks. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a question in relation to the surface drainage plan. That, that would have to be done before the permit was...
Yes, correct, yes. So, for any expansion to any building in the City of Charlestown where it's over 215 square feet, a surface drainage plan is required. 215 square feet, a surface drainage plan is required prior to permit approval. So staff will review that, just to ensure that there's going to be no resulting flood to adjacent parcels, that the drainage will be directed towards the street. So that'll be a requirement for sure.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Thanks, Chair. Hi, Emily.
Hi.
I noticed there's a nice tree line there between the two buildings. Any indication that that's going to be maintained, or is there a requirement to do that?
Yeah, so, and that came through in the public notification process. So we did consult with QCRS on this, and they indicated it's not their intent to remove any trees to accommodate the addition work as well, so to maintain that tree line there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well then, if I could get somebody to move that Planning Board recommend to council to approve the major variance request with the two stipulations that are included in Emily's report. Just need somebody to move that. Moved by Paul Conley, seconded by Bobby Kenny. Kenny, all those in favor? Chris?
I'll be in favor.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Well, that concludes all of our reports. Do we have any new, any introduction of new business that anybody wanted to add? Your worship? Okay, nice to see you. Okay, so then I'll just need somebody to move an adjournment. Moved by Counselor McCabe, and seconded by Counselor Beck. Okay. Thank you, everybody, and enjoy your evening. Thanks, Emily.
Right, thank you. Bye-bye.